Do we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I get, we have many groups in this school. Before I get going, and they're all, they're all great. They all have all these good qualities about them. But today is Teachers Appreciation Day. Well, I went to the parade today and the ton of teachers that were there and the kids that were missing their teachers, you would have thought they were a long-lost relative, which I think they were. They, the kids wanted their attention, the teachers were giving, I just gotta say that I don't think you could find a better bunch of educators around. I really don't. I just appreciate them. And then certainly the parents. And if you could have seen the lines and nobody knew where the police were, well, they were down directing traffic to bring them back because they had to go all the way around to come through and it was nonstop for an hour. And Brita was at the front of it waving them in. And we had the A.D. and principals and stuff and they were directing traffic on the road. I'm afraid they were gonna get hit, but they didn't. So I'm gonna say publicly that this was great, they were great, and I don't, I don't see how we could have a better group. So, I just wanted to say that right away. All our additions to our agenda are in green, which you won't find, there's too, too many. But we do have presentation and they're very important. We have presentation for school closure update and school board vote update. So, and they are ready to roll.
Thanks, Dennis. So I just kind of bundled all my reports into one presentation tonight, what you have in front of you and I believe are on the screen. Where the governor's executive order, New York State schools are now closed for the remainder of the academic school year. The governor also announced that he will make a decision to close summer school towards the end of May. So of course, we feel that summer school would be a great opportunity to get our students back in school and engage and fill some gaps, but we will follow, of course, we will follow the governor's executive order. And I don't believe we will have summer school, but we shall see. There are three requirements during closure for school districts. Continuity of learning, meals, and childcare. These are all plans a school must have and they have to be approved by the state education department. I'd like to talk about the continuity of instruction, our goal. We are striving to maintain focus on the overall health, safety, achievement, and welfare of our students while engaging our students in meaningful and interactive learning opportunities. And that's our goal during this closure time. Our instructional platform. Teachers will connect with their students through written feedback, web-based programs, email, phone calls, as well as digital platforms such as ClassDojo, Flipgrid, and Google Meet. Google Classroom is our primary platform for remote learning.
So Brita, when you say primary, are there other platforms that people are using?
That, no, I believe everyone is using, should be using Google Classroom or Google School. And we're using some of these other platforms as supplementary to keep kids engaged.
Okay. Yeah, just because I was on a thing this afternoon and apparently some parents are having a hard time switching from one platform to the other for different kids.
So whenever you go into the Google Classroom, it has all the assignments and everything. And then a lot of times in the assignment, there'll be a link that will then open up a new tab and sometimes that will be in another platform. You know, so there's a whole, and most of the kids, I know my son seems very familiar with all of them. They were using them in school before. So I commend the entire staff and administration for having already started on Google Classroom. I think it was almost two years ago.
No, we've been doing Google Classroom for, yeah.
Yeah, and it's become something that they were utilizing a lot, so the kids are fairly familiar with it. But sometimes there is little glitches with bringing up that other, you know, platform. And maybe a video won't play or something. Usually you can bring it up on a different computer, but I'm sure there's, and I think that tech support has been really good as far as if they're having trouble getting something up to be able to do it.
Good. And all those other links, everything runs through Courtney first, so we know where legally and it's safe.
Yes, we have to sign agreements with them.
Okay.
Instructional platform for our special area teachers. They connect with, through their homeroom teachers using Google Classroom. Special area teachers provide weekly, monthly activities for students to have multiple options to choose from. Continuity of instruction for learning expectations for synchronous communication. Students have the option to connect with their classmates via read alouds, show and tell, Kahoot games, Flipgrid videos, ClassDojo messages, Google Meets, or web-based challenges. Asynchronous communication. Students will have the opportunity to meet with a teacher, service provider, or counselor during office hours, teletherapy, or one-to-one Google Meet sessions. Attendance, something that we're required to monitor. Participation will be monitored by the classroom teacher and the special area teachers. Teachers will be the primary contact and reach out to students and families with concerns if there's a lack of participation to better understand the reasons for why they're not participating. Our school resource officer and support staff, such as school counselors, social workers, and psychologists, will be notified when teachers are unable to connect with students or families. The SRO will make home visits to encourage participation and check on the welfare of students and families. And our school resource officer does make daily, daily runs for checks. And basically, we are checking on the welfare of the students. You know, once in a while, he'll say, are you getting your work done? But it's basically, if we don't hear from them for two or three days, we want to make sure that they're okay. Seven through 12, teachers will monitor student attendance and class activity during each week of study. Teachers will report student inactivity to the administration using a Google form. Grading, there's been a lot of work and a lot of thought into grading, a lot of conversation, BOCES-wide, district-wide, school-wide. Teachers in grades K through five will be documenting evidence of student mastery of revised slash condensed power standards. Teachers will note this on a rubric to share with next year's teacher. Students who do not show mastery of standards during remote learning will not be considered for retention. So I want to make sure everyone understands that you are not going to be retained if you do not show mastery of the standards. We will catch you up either in the summer or at the beginning of next year. Students who did not show mastery of standards prior to the remote learning may be considered for retention. So in the first two marking periods, if the mastery wasn't shown, they may be considered for retention. But in our closure period, we will not be considering students for retention. There will not be formal grading of standards in the third trimester report card K-12, K-5. Teachers will use a narrative to identify student strengths and goals for the summer, which I think is outstanding and a lot of work by our teachers and they should be commended for that kind of feedback to our students. Grading for six, 12 students in the third quarter were assessed on assignments and assessments assigned prior to or on Friday, May 13th. And were graded and factored into the third quarter. So we got our third quarter kind of nailed down.
March 13th. Yeah, March 13th.
March 13th. Limited new material was presented to students until the fourth quarter began as students transitioned into online learning. So there was a period there where we were just, it was practice and engagement. That's the period we were in, it was not new learning. Review material was evaluated and given proper feedback to students. Six through 12 students' coursework assigned or due on or after Monday, April 20th, 2020 will be graded and counted on the fourth quarter. Students are expected to complete assignments and assessments per the teacher's instructions through the remainder of the fourth quarter. Teachers will continue to be flexible with timelines and grading and teachers should be commended for that as well. But we understand, you know, students, this is a new way of learning and there's accessibility problems as well. Students who do not show evidence of learning during the remote learning will not be considered for non-completion of the course. Students who did not show evidence of learning prior to remote learning may be considered for repeating of the course. And remember, the Regents exams are waived, so if you successfully complete a course, that, that's your Regents, that's successful Regents. So grading for advanced placement and college-level courses will continue to follow college and course standards with new material and grading to ensure compliance with college regulations. So the colleges are grading, are doing assignments. And I think it's good practice for students to be doing that because when they move on to college next year, that they may be doing the same thing as they begin their new school year because we're not sure if they'll be on campus in the fall. Continuity of instruction, the schedule. Each classroom teacher K-5 is set up to schedule to meet with and teach new material. The focus of new instruction is E.L.A. and math. Instruction should be approximately 30 minutes per subject per day. An additional 30 minutes per week should also be included for optional special area activities. Science and social studies assignments may be presented as optional activities. Students in grades six through 12 classes are set up on Google Classroom platform. Weekly schedules are posted for students and parents for Google Meets where new instruction will occur. And the teachers just did an amazing job of everybody getting on a schedule because of course, just like in school, they couldn't meet with, you know, physics and Algebra II and, you know, agriculture class at the same time. So we really, the teachers had to do a lot of work in making a schedule that all of the students could meet their teachers in their classes. Teachers post videos of instruction for students who cannot participate in scheduled meetings. Teachers focus on one to two hours of schoolwork per week, per class in grades six through eight, and two to three hours of schoolwork per week, per class for grades nine through 12. Online instruction is approximately 60 minutes, one to two times per week. Additional office hours are available for students to meet with the teachers for class support, two to three times per week. Related services. Support services noted on a student's IEP, including counseling, behavior interventions, speech, language therapy, and occupational and physical therapy will be provided through remote learning activities. Parents can expect a student service provider to contact them to discuss how services on the IEP will be delivered.
How's that working out with getting students the services they need?
I think as well as it can be, of course, we know that this is far from what we would like for our students to have. But the teletherapy is an option. But when we're talking for, as, you know, that remote learning might be a wave of the future, I think this will be a gap that we would have to address because I do think some students, that would not work for them. Related services. Speech, language therapy, and occupational therapy. Therapists will plan and provide specific activities designed to work toward individual goals and provide instructional phone calls and/or video conferences to guide these activities, answer questions, and check in on progress. Physical therapy. The physical therapists will offer synchronous sessions provided through teletherapy on digital platforms to provide, to work towards individual student goals. Another very difficult task. Counseling, social workers, school psychologists will continue to provide resources and strategies for building social, emotional skills and will provide sessions via telephone and/or video conferencing with parents and students to work towards individual goals. Again, our counselors are very busy all day long, helping students through this time. CSE and 504 meetings are going very well. CSE and 504 meetings will be held via video conferencing using Google Meet and telephone conference. Invitations will be sent to parents via email, mail. If your child was recommended for an evaluation that requires a face-to-face assessment or observation, the evaluation will be delayed until school reopens. Evaluations and reevaluations that do not require face-to-face assessments or observations may take place while schools are closed if the parent or legal guardian provides consent. School counselors in grades K-12 will communicate with students directly as needed. Counselors will continue to support students and families in course and transition planning. Remote support may consist of written communication, telephone calls, or video conferences. School psychology, psychologists and social worker. School psychologists, counselors, and the school social workers will provide resources for supporting students' emotional health at home. Parents who have questions about how to support the social and emotional needs of their child should contact their principal, who will help them make connections to personnel and resources. Be mindful that students need routines and structures related to sleep, nutrition, and physical activity, as well as the new expectations of remote learning. Continuity of instruction technology. To the extent possible, we will utilize technology platforms that are familiar to students. See school-specific guidelines in the sections above for the platforms being used to coordinate and communicate the distance learning expectations. And that's what the platforms we've mentioned. GAWA will continue to support students K-12 with one-to-one devices. Families without access to Wi-Fi will be provided with a MiFi based on accessibility. Students and families who experience issues with connectivity or technology issues can use the Eagle Help Desk to access tech support. That is the continuity of instruction that will be on our website immediately following our board meeting for our parents, our families, and our community. And that is the plan that has uploaded into our state portal.
So at the end of the Help Desk to Access Technical Support, it's eagletechsupport@gawa-csd.org. You've got your picture covering the .org part, just in case.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That'd be a game breaker for me.
Yeah, exactly. The second area we'll talk about are the meals. We are required to continue providing meals. Currently, we're providing meals for about 130 students. Food service is sending home meals with dessert for the week along with a bundle of goodies for every family on Monday morning. We're also adding the transportation, put in a coloring book this week. And Mrs. McDougall put in crayons. The admin team has put in chocolate lollipops. Every, we've tried to make every Monday something fun in there for the students. I believe Mrs. Wasserman has put art supplies. So I know I'm forgetting people who put things in these meals, but meal delivery continues and that's just really a wonderful thing to see on Monday mornings, the production line, how it gets loaded onto the buses, how it gets delivered, and so that's going very well.
So can I ask, and this may be silly, but our budget for the year for cafeteria meals, does all this fall within that or are we way over or, you know?
We're over right now, but there's a reimbursement form that we filled out at the very beginning of the pandemic. We haven't heard about, but we've done all the proper paperwork to be reimbursed.
Okay.
Families in need of food delivery, we'll, we can add them. And the meals, you can contact Mrs. McDougall. This will also be on the website. Childcare is our third requirement from the state education department, provided for families of healthcare workers and first responders. Our districts works with BOCES to provide these services. Mr. Miller is our contact for childcare. So any healthcare or first responder in need of childcare should contact Mr. Miller. And this is provided at the BOCES at the Meyer Center. There's one at Sanford Street, there's three locations.
And at this point, how many students do we have?
We've never had any.
Never have any?
No.
But we are helping out.
Yeah, but we are helping out, yes.
Is there provisions for, you know, hopefully as restrictions are lifted and even though the children are not going back to school, a lot of parents will hopefully be going back to work, some of which who already are and are already struggling trying to find someone to take care of their children, especially if they normally have the grandparents take care of their kids and now they don't want them exposed to each other. Are there options or at least resources for people who need childcare who aren't necessarily healthcare workers or first responders?
No, not at this time.
Do we have resources in place? I know we talk a lot about the well-being of the students. Are there resources for parents who may be struggling? And do we have resources for our staff who may be really struggling? And because I know I've seen a lot of, I've been on a lot of webinars and a lot of teachers are burning out with trying to be there for their students and be there for their own kids and using the technology. And it's like they said, we thought we were busy before, but now this is just like so many times, so much more. And there's seen, like people are starting to get burned out. Do we have resources or are we doing anything to help them?
You know, there are human, you know, human resources, but I don't know if it has been pushed out to the staff. So I think that's an excellent suggestion that we could push that out to the staff because no one's really needed the services before. So I think that's a great suggestion to, and I do think that everyone, that's why I didn't think that school during spring break should have happened. I think that parents needed a break, I think the kids needed a break, and I think the teachers needed a break. And, you know, nobody doesn't want to help kids, but it was just a great opportunity to say, everybody just breathe for a week. And that didn't happen. So I think that people are, like, we're all starting to, you know, feel it. And, you know, I had, you know, Dennis alluded to the parade today. Well, there was a great sign on one of the cars, was my favorite sign. And I believe it called Teacher a Liar. And it said, "You told me my child was a pleasure to be with," or something like that. So it was the best sign of the whole parade, but I think, you know, but, you know, it was a joke. But, you know, I get emails, well, I can't get to it right now because I'm the, you know, I'm the chef today, I'm the math tutor today, I'm this today, I'm this today. That's a parent and then, you know, so you're right. Everybody, you know, is stressed out. A lot of people saying, oh, we can, no, we know we can do this remote learning. Well, now we know we can't do it on a sustained basis unless we change some significant things. So, yeah.
Do we have an idea or at least have an idea when we might find out when the school year will be considered over and instruction will?
Right, so we're waiting for guidance on that right now. We're, we have to do 180 days.
Okay.
And so the governor closed schools two days after we closed. We closed with the BOCES. So we're looking into two days, but Sarah Toga did call, or emergency, you know, called a... So we're wondering if those can be emergencies. We're not wondering, we've already put in paperwork. So those two days right now are in question. People are asking about Memorial Day. We will not work, that's, we will not work Memorial Day. That day will be off, but we're looking at the Friday before Memorial Day and then the exact, like, when is the last day of school? And hopefully we'll have that answer, you know, in the next week.
Okay.
I mean, I can count the days and tell you now, I believe it's gonna be June 18th, but I'm not, I'm not quite there yet.
Okay.
But that's where, that's where we're thinking.
As long as we have some idea of when.
Yeah. I hate to say a day because, you know, she said June 18th, and I'm like, no, I'm saying I think it may be June 18th.
Yeah, and I just, you know, I feel like there's some concern that it took a while and I think the kids and the parents all really needed those few weeks to get their bearings, learn how to survive and get things done and get on track. So they needed that, but we lost a lot of days there. And some of the concern is, you know, is it gonna then get tacked onto the summer, especially, you know, going through break? And like you said, everybody needs a break, even though we can't really go anywhere and do anything, just not feel like you have that responsibility, you know, to do it. And I think that is the big thing, especially with the staff, you know, but all, all parents are going through it too, is trying to juggle everything. You know, you're home and we're not just eating bonbons.
Do we, have we made any provisions for, I know like last summer, during the summer, kids were able to come up and get lunches and stuff. Has anything been set up for that so that whenever we are done, these kids don't go from having food to suddenly having nothing?
Yes, we're working with the Salvation Army. We've continued to work with them, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the continuity of learning plan and meals and childcare?
Now, does that have to get approved or you just submit it?
No, it has to be approved.
Wow, they have people that do that.
Apparently. Okay. You are going to have voting and questions that I'm not gonna be able to answer, so I will tell you what I know. And only because we ask questions daily and, you know, attorneys are looking into it and they don't quite understand. So we're gonna do the best we can through this election. We're gonna have a fair and honest and complete election. We're gonna follow all of the rules. We're documenting everything that we do. So I want to share with the Board of Education what we know and what we're doing. We are modifying the, Governor Cuomo modified the rules under which school districts are to conduct their annual meeting for the election of school board members and budget votes. Our, the election will be held on June 9th, 2020. School board nominations. An individual must meet any requirements necessary to be placed on the ballot, including age and residency requirements. With the following exclusion. Candidates will not be required to obtain signatures on the nominating petitions. Everything else remains the same. You still have to complete the form, you still have to be proper age, you still have to live in GAWA for one year. But you just do not have to get the signatures like you normally would. Here's the nomination of the candidate form. Candidates must be 18 years of age or older, resident of the district for a period of one year prior to June 9th. The deadline for filing petitions is 5:00 p.m. on Monday, May 11th, 2020. And this form will need to go to the district clerk, Lyndon Dombrowski, by Monday, May 11th, by 5:00 p.m. Candidate expenditure and reimbursement statements. Board member candidates must submit campaign expenditure and reimbursement statements. Filing dates, May 11th is 30 days prior to the election, June 4th, five days preceding the election, and 29 days, uh, June 29th is 20 days after the election. And these are pretty standard forms and just ask you what you spent. We were just filling out one later earlier today, right? These are also available from the district clerk, Lyndon Dombrowski. Legal notice of the budget vote. So one will be going out in the next day or two. Executive order reduces the number of publications from four to two, with the first publication occurring no later than May 12th.
How does that go out? Does that get mailed to everyone?
No, that goes in the recorder and the Gazette as a public notice.
And on the website?
I believe she, I'm, I'll ask her to do that, but I do know it goes in the recorder and the Gazette. It has to go in two publications, so. Districts are required to send out a postcard. that provides notice detailing the date of the election, the date of the budget hearing, the definition of a qualified voter. Our postcards will be sent on May 13th.
Do we know what a qualified voter is outside of the?
It will have it on the postcard. Budget hearings, we are required to conduct a budget hearing between May 26th and June 2nd. This hearing will be held virtually same format as we are here tonight. Our budget here, hearing will be on May 28th at 6:30 PM. Voter registration. Voter registration for our district will take place on May 28th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You can also register electronically through the DMV and the Saratoga County Board of Elections. Mailing of absentee ballots. The executive order requires this year's school budget vote and board election be conducted entirely by absentee ballot. Our district will be sending absentee ballots on May 26th.
So does, do they go to anybody who is registered to vote?
Any qualified voter in our district.
Do we know how, do we know how many people that is?
We have a service.
Like, my thought is, what is this going to cost us on postage?
You hit it right on the nose.
Because, don't we also have to include a stamped envelope to send it back?
Correct.
So, so we could be sending out hundreds or thousands of dollars in postage that people throw in the garbage?
Correct.
That was the discussion that we had and very, it's unbelievably, I mean, the post office, if they're hurting, they won't be hurting after this for a while. Put it that way. All schools have to do it.
Makes you wonder if there wasn't a reason behind that for different states anyway.
I don't know. I, I just know that when, when something like this happens, I would like to see an executive order from the president saying postage waived. And it's not going to happen because as you've noticed that people have been going after the post office now. So it is going to cost us, it's another expense that we have to incur.
And that we haven't budgeted for.
That we haven't budgeted for, absolutely.
And there's no reimbursement on this one, right?
No. It'll probably be the same in September. What do you mean?
November?
Somebody's going to pay for it. It ain't going to be the government.
Receipt of completed absentee ballots. The ballots may be returned by mail or in person and must be received in the office of the district clerk by 5:00 PM, June 9th. There will be a drop box under the outside overhang from 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM for personal return of ballot. So someone will monitor that, but you will not have to come in the building. You'll be able to drop off your ballot. Election inspectors, the district appointed chairman of the election and election inspectors at the July 2019 REORG meeting, which is Linda Dombrowski and Janet Ben-Riswick. Linda will contact the election inspectors. So I think I have a next slide about that. So no, I don't. So they will, so if I have this later on, I apologize. So the election inspectors will actually count the ballots and they will be livestreamed. So it'll be in a format like this. They'll be socially distanced, but you will be able to watch them livestream. Which will be interesting because we're having, you know, issues live streaming in the evening because of all the traffic on the web, I believe.
We don't have to certify anything like we had to previous, right? That part suspended?
I know, I do think we have to certify. The board has to certify the vote.
Yeah, we, we have to vote that night.
Yeah.
Oh, so we do?
Yes.
So will we have to come here to do that or can we do that?
We can do it virtu, you can have, you can have a virtual meeting.
Like myself personally, I would come, because I can't, you know, it's me, can't do it. But it's better to have a couple of us here if we can. I wouldn't ask if you can't, if you feel you don't want to be here, don't be here. But it's, it's the most transparent way to let people know that somebody is, is watching over, seeing, so.
And I think if any of us can't be here, I think a lot of the problems we had with the one meeting was there were multiple people in the same room, all logged on to the same board meeting. I think if we have anyone who can't be here in person as far as board members, maybe we can have one computer that has the Zoom meeting or not Zoom, but whatever.
You can actually use your phone to say yes or no, as long as you say you're not under duress.
Right. That's true. But that way there's one.
You can read out the stuff that, that you need to know, give all, give all the things and then you can go yea or nay.
So I did a slide so that you, everyone would understand the important dates. May 11th, the petition for board seats due at the end of the day to the district clerk. May 13th, we'll be mailing our postcards to all eligible voters. May 19th, we will have our board meeting to adopt the budget. May 20th, the tax report card is due to the New York State Education Department. May 28th, we will have a public hearing on our 2021 budget. May 29th, the budget newsletter will be mailed to all eligible voters. And June 9th is the vote.
Where, where does the budget stand right now? I know we were waiting till the end of April to see, but we haven't really heard much from them, right? So.
From the governor?
Yeah.
No. So on my next slide, so you kind of did the segue, so thank you, Stacy. I appreciate it. So it's all good, right? We're all good. We, if the new state aids are available, as the first look back, back period is behind us, that was April 30th, we may have to meet to determine if our budget can be supported at the same level by the state aid. So our business administrative team is actively working on budgets that reflect different scenarios. What I'm asking the board tonight is to please keep May 15th open as a tentative date in case we, in case we have to adopt a budget other than the presented preliminary budget.
So that's next week?
Correct.
Coming on us quick.
Next Friday.
When will you know by?
Oh, I, it might be that day.
Right up until that day? Okay.
Yeah. So I'm just, you know, if, you know, we come out with a budget and we're looking at drastically different numbers than state aid numbers runs that they've given us, then we're going to have to meet and talk. And then my last slide, I talked to Dennis about this a little bit and, you know, May 14th, that's next week, so they might even have more information. The Adirondack Area School Boards Association, Saratoga County School Boards Association is having a free, they're having a panel and it will be virtual, so you'll be able to sit home and, and watch this or, and ask questions through the chat. But May 15th, they're for managing the budget vote and board election and other urgent legal issues. So I recommend that if you had free time during that period, you might want to sit in and, and listen to that discussion. So this entire presentation will be available on our website, either this evening or tomorrow morning. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
You're up again, superintendent's report.
Yeah, kind of all, I, I just, yeah, I just bundled everything, Dennis.
Personnel, nothing. Consent agenda. Take a look at your, your attached sheet and can I have a motion to accept the following consent agenda? Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
And you have a minute to look at it too, and any discussion when you do. Any discussion? Is everybody done? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It has passed. Under new Bennett, oh, yeah, Bennett, business, new business. We need the first reading of the following Board of Education policy and regulations. One is 5500E slash four, student records exhibit, bill of rights for data privacy and security policy. And then there's 6840, use of Department of Education grant funds. Do we have any of those?
Yeah, the title funds.
Okay.
We're going to have some roll, they're going to allow us to roll over in some circumstances, some money, so this is a good thing.
All right. During extraordinary circumst, okay. We don't, we don't vote on it tonight. Just would take a look at them. Okay. Unfinished business. Going to get together with Brita before the next meeting. This is an opportune time, that I was reminded by Michelle, thank you, that we get back to some of our business that will affect the following years that come up. And we'll come up with the, with the ideas so we can, we can get them together and get them out to you and, and some are going to be more important than others at this point because of the situation we're in, so we're going to take a look at that kind of thing. So if anybody has a comment on that, it's a good time.
Yeah, so, I mean, I do, I've kind of just been keeping track of all the topics that have come up. I think, you know, some of the issues have been past is that we encompass so many different topics and so many different things, we get talking about them and sometimes they don't fully get resolved and they just linger. And, you know, there's lists upon lists of things that we need to do and, and I think you're right. Right now is a good time when, at least most of us have a little bit of extra time to just look at when would we want to address each of those topics and kind of set out topics for board meetings in the future so they're set and you kind of almost don't have to worry about it. Gets a lot off of our plate to know it's there and set and then we can look at it. I would like to try and have a meeting where we all sit down and just go over those topics and we don't really discuss any of them and just sit and say, okay, this is something that can wait till three years from now even, you know, I mean.
I'll make a suggestion, since you've made that suggest, which is a good one. Instead of going forward and us picking the topics, we have the meeting and prioritize them, spend the half hour to an hour. And then everybody can have a say and then we can get a list and it won't be a surprise. I hate surprises.
Yeah, but if we could kind of sit down and come up with a
Yeah.
date tonight or which meeting?
Yeah.
We likely won't have anything else to?
Yeah, so when we leave here, we have an idea of when we're doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Committee reports, I don't think we, we're mainly focused on our budget. Anything with money, not all Lynn and Stacy and ideas, that's good. We'll bring them up. We don't have a public comment if, and I'm laying it all on Brita.
Did we get any from last time?
No.
So for those of you watching tonight from this, from home, if you do have any public comments, please feel free to bring them up and then we'll address them at the next meeting.
Email them to Brita and then we'll get them.
Yep. Thank you. Here. So we're going to go right to board member comments and I'm going, John, you haven't said a word tonight and it's unlike you and you're going first.
Well, I was afraid I would be coughing and Chris would cut my microphone anyway, but I am very pleased with all the information that Brita has presented and I am in favor of getting those parking lot items moving and that's it.
Thank you. Stacy?
Just a real thank you to Brita and the administrators and all the staff for all that they're doing with everything going on. People are going way above and beyond for our students and I think that's a real plus in addition to trying to plan for next year with all the unknowns. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Erin?
I have, I bring nothing tonight. Just, just thank you.
I don't believe that, but okay.
I'm just feeling after these eight weeks of home telecommuting, I'm just, you know, exhausted. And I only have one child, so my hat's off to all of you with more than one at home.
Okay, that's very pertinent. Lynn?
One thing, the caravan today, is that going to be on the website? Did anybody record that?
I saw pictures. I don't know if they're on the website yet. So I'm not sure about video, Lynn, but I know there's lots of pictures.
Okay.
I tried getting my son to videotape. I was going to give that to him as a job, but he wouldn't do it.
And another question, after this is all concluded, hopefully, or somewhat concluded, will we give parents an opportunity to have some feedback regarding the remote learning?
I think we should give them opportunity for a feedback before it's all over, you know, while it's fresh.
Right, right.
I think that then we'll capture, you know, what's really going on right now.
The pluses and the minuses.
Yeah, yes, correct.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I really feel that the, the teachers have done a very good job of really asking for the, the student feedback as to, is this working? Can we, should we do it a different way? So I feel like that's happening continuously. And also just keeping in touch with the parents, you know, I, I feel like the, the level of emails at least has started to come down a little bit. You know, between trying to deal with, you know, work emails and, you know, each kid's emails. But I definitely have to commend them for their efforts. I feel like they've, they've put a lot of the, the students' minds at ease and, and made them comfortable being able to, to work through this. And certainly for the entire staff for, for really putting the, the health of our students and their families first. Because I think that that is, is the, the main stay-home message that comes across here is, is that safety, safety first and, and not just physical safety, but just their mental well-being. You know, and hopefully summer will come again. The, the reverse parade was amazing today. It was backed all the way down 147. And, you know, nobody seemed upset about it. Everybody was, you know, there was a big truck sitting behind me and I think he was very amused what was going on. But it really was, I think it, it did, and I had said this earlier before the meeting, is that I think my kids really, it struck home when the teachers were saying, have a great summer. You know, because it, it really is, you know, not too far off that we're at summer and hopefully things will seem a little bit more normal, you know, but it's somewhat bittersweet to, to see all of them during that time and, and realize that we're not going to get a chance to, to actually see them in person for quite a while. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Brita, do you have?
No, it's just Teacher Appreciation Week and we love our teachers and I think you said Dennis, they're second to none and just so proud of our staff for what they've done and just pivoted and just really taken everything and really have gone for to, I feel like they have created some connections with their students that even they might not have had if they were here. They're very powerful and to see them today was just terrific and I loved it and also I want to thank the admin team because, you know, we really searched and what are we going to do for our teachers? They're not here and we want to tell them how much we appreciate them and so, you know, they took the reins and, you know, they said we could do this and they really worked hard to make it happen. So I want to thank the admin team very much for their efforts to make it happen and you know, we tied balloons for an hour today. That was fun and so I was, it was, it was fun not And so I was, it was, it was fun not to think about, you know, continuity of learning, meals. Like, what are we going to do next? It was fun to tie balloons and welcome the teachers back. So thank you, teachers, for all you do. I don't think you should have a week. I think every day should be teacher day, appreciation day. And, um, um, our community and schools are very lucky to have that, teachers that we have. So thank you.
Can I ask a quick question that I didn't think of before? Karen, you brought up about doing something for the seniors. Has there been any thought about something, you know, to acknowledge them?
They had the mention about having the graduations at the drive-ins.
Yeah, we kind of like to announce what we're doing for seniors, like the beginning of June. There's lots of plans in place. We've already, in front of me, I think, is still the sign, like someone took it. You're still there, I like that. It's still in front of me. So, um, we put them there. We have lots of plans in place. We have calls made, we have things done that are surprises for them. But yes, there's been, um, a lot of thought and now we're going to pull in some stakeholders to kind of complete the process, including their teachers, including some parents, some community members, and we're pulling in a lot of people to help us make it the best possible, um, you know, celebration that we can under the circumstances.
And, um, this week, um, I saw A F T. released a plan for reopening in the fall. I know like we're still just trying to get through this year, but.
No, we're doing it.
Yeah, I was going to say, have you formed a, a group that's looking at that?
The B O C's chief school officers have formed a, formed a group and, um, they will be, um, working on a back to school plan and our B O Cs, all of our schools, uh, will be working under the same plan. And, um, so that's how.
But will we have a group here that includes the teachers and the staff and parents and all for what will happen specifically here?
Well, we're still waiting to see because we feel like there's going to be a lot of guidance and a lot of executive orders, like, telling us what we're going to have to be doing. So, um, right now, we're under the Bo, bottom of B O C's guidance and from there, we'll see what the executive orders say. And then again, we always like to pull in all of our stakeholders because that's how we get our best results is to talk to as many different groups as we possibly can to have the best result.
Thanks.
Thank you. Like, good question because we're just talking about that today. I'm not a, um, since it's my turn, I, I'm not, um, I don't like to be in a position that somebody that doesn't know us, that had no idea what goes on around here, decide to write this executive order saying what we're going to do. Now, I'm all for, you know, maybe you caught on a little bit. You, you can, you can say, this is what we want done. You didn't tell me how to do it, now I'm going to do it. And that's just the point where I'm at. And with the people around here, with the, with our sta, our teachers, our board, our, all this. And I'm telling you, we come up with better ideas. And that's what I'm looking for. Am I going to make a, a big stink about the whole thing? No, I will listen, I will follow the laws. But I do know it's a tort, unless, unless somebody says, you can't do it this way, you can do it this way. So I know where you're coming from, all of you, and, and boy, I appreciate it. I appreciate your thoughts on this. Cause it, it, uh, maybe it's a lack of sleep, I don't know. But I am, I am really, when you look around this community and you go to other communities, they're doing the same thing. They're not on the same tier, the levels are all different. Every community is different. And I got to tell you, you got, you got Charlton, you got Galway, you got Providence, you got part of Amsterdam, you got part of Milton, you know. You just, you, one size does not fit all. And that, that's my conclusion on that. But I would also like to say, I can't wait to see somebody come to the board meetings again. I'm going to say that every time. Look forward to it and I, and I, and I hope, um, people, um, watch this board meeting. So if they do have a question, please contact Brita. Okay? So that's all I have, unless somebody else has anything else. And thank you, Chris, again. So we are now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.